I'm going to register on January 23, 2025. As notice numbers 2025-5 through 2025-11 and 2025-13. This hearing is being held on the date, time, and location indicated. This hearing is being held in person as well as via Microsoft Teams to provide increased access. Hearing is being recorded. During this hearing, I will provide an overview of the technology that we are using, explain the mechanism for submitting written comments, and explain how to register to provide verbal comments on the provisions. Then we will provide a summary of the rule and proposed changes. And lastly, we will receive public comments. All attendees have the opportunity to listen and will be able to provide verbal testimony when invited through the Microsoft Teams platform by phone or in person. At this time, I'm going to provide an introduction to the Microsoft Teams platform that we are using for this hearing. You will notice the Teams meeting controls on the top of your screen. There is a microphone or mic button that will allow you to speak only when you are called upon after DES staff enables your microphone. You'll also have access to the chat function that I will explain shortly. As of now, the chat function is turned off and will be enabled later. Your video should be disabled and will remain in that state during the hearing. Right now, all attendees are muted. The chat function is disabled, and you should be able to see and hear NHDES staff. Attendees will remain in this state until I open the floor for comments. I will provide detailed instructions on how to request to speak shortly. If you need technical assistance with the Microsoft Teams, we have Alyssa Moody of DES available to help. I will read her phone number and email address now. Contact information will be posted on the screen intermittently throughout the hearing. You can reach Alyssa by phone at (603) 271-6460 or by email at alysa.a.moody@des.nh.gov. That's A-L-Y-S-S-A dot A dot M-O-O-D-I-E at des.nh.gov. If you are experiencing trouble using computer audio, we suggest calling in with your telephone. Call-in number is (603) 931-4944 and the phone conference ID is (803) 760-710, followed by the pound sign. If you do call in to avoid an echo, please turn off your computer speakers. I'll provide instructions shortly regarding when to use your microphone. Until you're called upon to speak, your microphone will be disabled. Now I will provide instruction on how to provide written comments. Written comments on the proposed rules may be submitted until the close of the public comment period on Thursday, March 6 at 4:00 p.m. Written comments can be submitted by email submitted online using the NHDES Administrative Rules Public Comment Form, available on our website, or mailed to Wendy Bonner, NHDS Hazardous Waste Management Bureau, P.O. Box 95, Concord, New Hampshire, 03302-0095. After the close of the comment period, the department will consider all comments received and will decide whether to revise the rules in response to the comments. The department will file its final proposed rules for consideration by the Joint Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, otherwise known as JLCAR. The department will post the final proposed rules on its administrative rules page. At this time, I would like to introduce Wendy Bonner of the Hazardous Waste Management Bureau. Wendy will now provide a brief overview of the proposals.
Thank you, Todd. Good morning. As Todd stated, my name is Wendy Bonner, and I'm the regulatory manager for the Hazardous Waste Management Bureau. We are receiving public comment today on proposed rule revisions that seek to accomplish three goals. The first is to adopt federal regulations, including the Generator Improvements Rule, or GIR, and the rules for recycled used oil. The second is to make some state-initiated revisions. And the third is to address the upcoming expiration of the hazardous waste rules by re-adopting with amendments Chapters ENVHW 500, 900, 1012. I will provide a brief overview of some of the proposed changes. For further details, please see the rulemaking notices and the rule language in the initial proposals, all of which are available on the NHDES website in the Public Comment Opportunities section. On that page, select the Rulemaking category. The department is proposing certain types of rule changes in all or several of the chapters. Those include clarifications, corrections, and conforming changes. Wherever the rules require use of forms, such as for notification, the department is proposing to delete form details from the rules and rely on the forms themselves. In addition, in three places in the rules, the department is proposing to remove duplicative requirements for responding to releases of hazardous waste. Those are in Parts ENVHW 513, 608, and 706. Now I'll describe proposed changes in each chapter. In Chapter ENVHW 100, Regarding Organizational Rules, the department is proposing to update the corporations by reference of the Code of Federal Regulations and is proposing new definitions, revising existing definitions, and repealing obsolete definitions. In Chapter 300, Regarding Permits, the department is proposing only clarifications, corrections, or conforming changes, nothing substantive. In Chapter ENVHW 400, the department is proposing some new exemptions at ENVHW 401.03b and a revision to the NH01 listing in ENVHW 402.06. In ENVHW 401.06, the department is proposing to add new test methods and remove unneeded test methods. In addition, the department is proposing to adopt EPA revisions to the ignitability and corrosivity characteristics in ENVHW 403.03 and 403.04. In Chapter 500, the department is proposing some state-initiated changes. These include replacing New Hampshire's existing generator category names with EPA's generator category names. A New Hampshire small quantity generator would be called a very small quantity generator. A full quantity generator would be called either a small quantity generator or a large quantity generator depending on their waste generation and accumulation. Please note that these new names do not change the requirements that apply to each generator. Another state-initiated change is in ENVHW 508.02 and 508.03, where the department is proposing to change the threshold for very small quantity generator extended storage from 220 pounds to 440 pounds of hazardous waste before the additional requirements must be followed. As a result of the Federal Generator Improvements Rule, the department is proposing to reorganize Chapter ENVHW 500 and clarify generator requirements, which generator requirements are conditions for exemption for meeting a standard permit and which are independent requirements. The Generator Improvements Rule also prompted the following changes for generators. Federal small quantity generators must re-notify the department every four years and large quantity generators every two years, which can be done as part of their biennial. Small quantity generators and large quantity generators must label hazardous waste containers, tanks, and containment buildings to indicate the hazards of the contents in addition to the existing labeling requirements. SQGs and LQGs must prepare a quick reference guide for their contingency plan and submit both to local emergency responders. In addition, the GIR requires LQGs to comply with new requirements for closure, including closure of central accumulation areas. The department is proposing to adopt provisions for episodic generation by VSQGs and SQGs. Lastly, in Chapter ENVHW 500, the department is proposing to adopt portions of the E-Manifest Third Rule, most of which went into effect in New Hampshire on January 21st, 22nd of this year. The changes pertain to paper manifests, electronic manifests, manifest data corrections, and exception reports. In ENVHW 600, Regarding Requirements for Hazardous Waste Transporters, the department is proposing clarifications, corrections, or conforming changes only. In Chapter ENVHW 700, Regarding Requirements for Owners and Operators of Hazardous Waste Treatment, Storage, or Disposal Facilities, the department is proposing to incorporate some technical documents by reference. In the majority of Chapter ENVHW 800, Regarding Requirements for Recycling of Hazardous Waste, the department is proposing clarifications, corrections, or conforming changes only. Changes to ENVHW 807 will be addressed voluntarily. In Chapter ENVHW 900, Regarding Inspection and Enforcement, the department is proposing to reorganize the administrative fine schedules for generator requirements that are conditions for exemption. The department is also proposing fine schedules for violations of the proposed used oil rules that I'll talk about shortly. In Chapter ENVHW 1000, Regarding the Hazardous Waste Cleanup Fund, the department is proposing to update procedures for household hazardous waste grants and adopt rules for the existing used oil grant program. In ENVHW 1100, Regarding Universal Waste, the department is proposing subsequent notification requirements for large quantity handlers and very large quantity handlers. In Chapter ENVHW 1200, Regarding the Disposal Restrictions, the department is proposing an additional labeling requirement for treatment, storage, or disposal facilities. In Chapter ENVHW 1300, Regarding Hazardous Waste Pharmaceuticals, the department is proposing a new record-keeping requirement for healthcare facilities and reverse distributors. In a new Chapter ENVHW 1400, the department is proposing to adopt with amendments EPA's Regulations for Used Oil in 40 CFR 279. This chapter would replace the existing rules in ENVHW 807. Changes include several new terms that are defined in ENVHW 1401.01, two categories for used oil based on contaminant concentrations, specification, and off-specification. The NH01 listing would apply only when used oil can't or won't be recycled. Ignitable hazardous waste may be mixed with used oil under certain conditions, and used oil could no longer be used for automotive undercoating. The department is proposing baseline requirements for all used oil handlers, and that term is defined in ENVHW 104. For used oil generators, the department is proposing that generators must determine halogen content of their used oil, but not whether it's specification or off-specification. Generators that burn their own used oil in on-site space heaters would be subject to less stringent requirements than under the existing rules. Unfortunately, EPA limits self-transport of used oil to 55 gallons, and New Hampshire cannot be less stringent than EPA. Our existing rules allow 110 gallons to be self-transported, so that number has to go down. In the proposed rules, household DIY used oil collection centers, which are usually located at municipal transfer stations, would be subject to the same requirements as used oil generators. The proposed rules include provisions for commercial used oil collection centers, which would be new to New Hampshire. These are places that would collect used oil from businesses, but not burn it. They would be subject to the same requirements as used oil generators, plus these entities must register with the department and comply with additional record-keeping and closure requirements. The proposed rules include provisions for used oil aggregation points, which are also new to New Hampshire. These are places that receive used oil from locations that are under the same ownership or control, similar to consolidation of VSQG hazardous waste. They would be subject to the same requirements as used oil generators plus some additional record-keeping requirements. In the proposed rules, used oil transporters could choose to establish used oil transfer facilities, again, new to New Hampshire. In addition to the federal requirements for used oil transfer facilities, the department is proposing secondary containment and closure requirements. Used oil processors and re-refiners have not been directly addressed in New Hampshire's rules until now. In addition to the federal requirements, the department is proposing to require secondary containment, additional emergency preparedness and prevention items, a quick reference guide for their contingency plan, and annual reporting instead of biannual reporting. The proposed rules for used oil burners include some additional secondary containment and closure requirements. And finally, the department has revised the used oil marketer rules to better align with federal requirements. That was a brief overview of some of the proposed changes to the hazardous waste rules. For further details, please see the rulemaking notices and the rule language in the initial proposals, all of which are available through the NHDES website in the Public Comment Opportunities section. On that page, select Verbal Making.
Thank you, Wendy. I will now provide instructions on how to register to provide verbal comments or ask clarifying questions about the proposed rules. If you wish to speak and are physically present at the hearing, if you haven't done so already, please fill out a comment card during the upcoming break, following these instructions, and give the card to our hearing facilitator, Julie Ashton. For those of you participating virtually that would like to comment when we enable the chat function, you will need to type your name, full address, and affiliation into the chat box. The information you type in the chat box is not your comment, and you should not type any substantive content in this box. Please only type information to identify who you are. For those participating by phone, please wait until prompted before taking any action to sign up to speak. Pressing any button on the phone will trigger an automated voice message to play and you may miss any further instructions they give. For phone participants that would like to speak, when I am done with these instructions, you may dial *5 on your keypad to signal our hearing facilitator that you would like to comment. When called on, you will be instructed to dial *6 on your keypad, which will allow our hearing facilitator to hear your microphone. For those of you who are virtual or participating by phone, we will call your name and enable your microphone so that you can make your comment. Please note that when you are unmuted and speaking, the department and all other attendees will hear you. If you are having technical difficulties, please contact Alyssa Moody, and we will continue down the list of speakers until you are able to be heard. We will take the names of everyone wishing to speak and list them on the screen. This way, you can see where you are on the list. We will be taking comments from those who are in person first, followed by virtual attendees, and then those participating by phone. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Please graciously yield the floor within five minutes so that I can call the next speaker. We will proceed through the list of names to give everyone the opportunity to provide testimony. In addition to providing verbal comments, the department would appreciate written copies of those comments. Please send them by an email to nhdesrules@des.nh.gov. If you are unable to provide all your comments in the allotted five minutes, and time allows, you may request an additional five minutes using the same methods you used to request to speak. If you run out of time, or if we run out of time and are unable to receive additional comments, please submit them by email to nhdesrules@des.nh.gov. Before we proceed with taking public comments, we will take a 10-minute break to allow attendees time to register to speak. Set a 10-minute timer for that. Turn off the light. Welcome back to the public hearing for proposed revisions to the hazardous waste rules. We are now ready to receive comments or clarifying questions. We will start with attendees physically present at the hearing. When your name is called, please come to the lectern in the center of the room to make your comment. DES staff member Tyler Croodoff will hold up the yellow card to notify you when you have one minute remaining to speak. The red card will signal that your time is up. After everyone in the room has had a chance to speak, we will open it up to virtual attendees and those participating by phone. When called on, please unmute your microphone and begin your comments by stating your name, full address, and affiliation. As a reminder, please keep your comments to five minutes or less. We will notify you when you have one minute remaining to speak. We have one. Anybody in the... in person has indicated they'd like to provide comment, so we'll move on to virtual attendees. So we're switching to virtual attendees who wish to speak. Those who are attending virtually, if you haven't done so already, please type your name, full address, and affiliation into the chat box to register. First commenter will be Patrick Austin. When I turn the floor over to you, please start by stating your first and last name, the city or town of your residence, or organization, the organization you represent, if any. Please keep your comments to five minutes. Am I muted, Julie?
They should be able to unmute themselves this way.
I am good. Can everyone hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Patrick Austin, Bo, New Hampshire, of the New Hampshire Auto Dealers Association. And I appreciate the work of everyone at the Department of Environmental Services, everyone up there. Specifically, Sarah Johnson is always massive help to myself and to our association, and we appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify that the deadline for an official public comment is on March 6th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And the only question or concern that I had is regarding under 904, 1409.09, and 1410.05. All three of these areas have a seven-day deadline for notification. And I believe in all three spots that is at the state level that we've made that decision. And in other places, under 702.02 and 505.01, there are 30-day windows. And I was just curious why the discrepancy, the difference between the two, and why they just all wouldn't align at 30 days.
Thank you for your question. This is Wendy Bonner. And I don't know off the top of my head why there is a discrepancy, but I will look into that. If you could please provide a written comment with asking that question, we will address it. The department will prepare a summary of comments and responses. So we compile all comments received on these rules, and we provide a written response that is available for public review. So if you could please send that in writing to us, we'd be happy to address that. And if the commissioner decides, he will make a change to the rules to make it 30 days instead of seven.
Awesome. Thank you very much. That was the only question that I had. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Seeing no one else has signed up to comment, if anyone else wishes to comment, if you were in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to our hearing facilitator, Julie Ashton. Those who are attending virtually, please type your name, full address, and affiliation into the chat box to register. For those participating by phone, dial *5 to signal our hearing facilitator that you would like to speak. A moment for anyone to sign up.
Okay.
Okay, our next commenter will be Matt Hughes. When I turn the floor over to you, please start by stating your first and last name, the city or town of your residence or organization, and the organization you represent, if any.
Good morning, Matt Hughes, Director of...
There you go.
With Wynn Wees Innovations, we operate the Wheelchair Concorde Waste Energy Facility in Penacook. One of the questions I have is on the exemptions in 401.03. You're proposing to add in to the exemptions if materials containing spillops, absorbent material, otherwise contaminated with used oil, is not exempt if it's burned for energy recovery. I'm just trying to understand why that change is being proposed.
Thank you for that question. Just a moment. I'll flip over to the rules to see. So that is in 401.03B...
Number three, B3. Or 19... I kind of just have it clipped on my notes here.
Yeah, no, I found it. Thank you. I believe, I need to verify this, but I believe that's a federal provision. But if you submit a written comment, which I would greatly appreciate, I will, we as the department will address that. You could also follow up with me after the hearing for a quicker response, but I believe that is a federal requirement. And we can't be any less stringent than EPA.
I mean, because in other states we operate in, we have it in our permits to be able to combust that material. So that's, I guess if it's a federal requirement, it's kind of a new one on me. But I guess we can look into that.
So the exemption reads, "materials containing or otherwise contaminated with used oil, including spill-absorbent material, soil, and debris from the cleanup of used spills provided." And it lists a whole bunch of criteria. This exemption would only apply if the materials containing or contaminated with used oil were in fact a hazardous waste. So perhaps that is the, this is an automatic, this provision would provide an automatic exemption for a material. If something is not regulated as a hazardous waste at all, then this exemption would not be necessary. Again, I would appreciate the opportunity to look into this further so that I can provide you a clear...
Yeah, I mean, presumably it would not be a hazardous waste for any, you know, no characteristic or, you know, any listed, not a hazardous waste by the hazardous waste definitions, but just, it seems like the exemption, if it's, assuming it's not a hazardous waste, which is on number two. But if you burn it for energy recovery, it would not be exempt.
Yeah. I will look into it further.
Okay. Very good. Very good.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else wishes to comment, is that correct? Commenter signed up? Seeing no one else wishes to comment, this hearing is hereby closed. I remind you that written comments can be submitted before 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, March 6th, 2025. Thank you for participating in this hearing.